Call to order the meeting of the Verona Common Council on Monday, August 12th, 2019, at 7:00 PM. We will begin with the pledge of allegiance.
The pledge of allegiance is to comply of the United States of America and to republievar what we understand as one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next, we'll have the role.
Alder Person Cronin.
President.
Alder Person Gaskell. Alder Person Journey.
Here.
Alder Person Kemp.
Here.
Alder Person Cole.
Here.
Alder Person Posey.
Here.
Alder Person Riki.
Here.
Alder Person Touche is on his way.
We have Quorum either way, although hopefully Alder Touche will be here shortly. Next, we have item five, which is appro- or beg your pardon. Next, we have item four, which is public comment. If anyone from the public wishes to speak, now would be the time to do so. Not seeing anyone run up to the podium, so we'll move on to item five, which is approve the minutes from the July 22nd, 2019 Common Council meeting.
So moved.
Motion by Alder Cole. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Alder Kemp. Last chance for corrections. Seeing none. All those in favor of approving the minutes from the July 22nd, 2019 Common Council meeting say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. And the minutes are approved. Next, we will move on to item six, which is mayor's business, and I have a couple things. Under A, I am honored to read the American Legion Day proclamation. Whereas, 2019 is the 100th anniversary of the American Legion, founded in Paris, France, on February 16th, 1919, and chartered by the US Congress on September 16th, 1919. And whereas the American Legion Auxiliary, also founded in 1919, is the largest organization for women in the world dedicated to veteran service. And whereas the American Legion and Auxiliary Unit, AKA the American Legion Family, has played a leading role in initiatives and breakthroughs that have affected the lives of Americans in every community, from a US flag code to the GI Bill. And whereas on November 20th, 1933, 19 World War I Verona Area veterans organized the Mason-Lindsey American Legion Post here in Verona, named in honor of Private William Mason and Private First Class Frank W. Lindsey, both Verona World War I veterans. And whereas on January 2nd, 1940, the Mason-Lindsey Auxiliary was organized as a unit of Mason-Lindsey American Legion Post. And whereas, for more than eight decades, the Mason-Lindsey American Legion Family has served both Verona Area veterans and the Verona community by promoting both Americanism and responsible citizenships- ship. And whereas, the Mason-Lindsey American Legion Family helps to develop and reinforce the minds of Verona students through scholarship programs, sponsorships to Badger Boys and Girls State, supporting the Verona Little League baseball program, and providing a color guard at Verona High School home football games. And whereas, the Mason-Lindsey American Legion Family supports community activities by organizing and conducting Memorial Day services, participating in the Adopt a Highway program, opening the Hometown Days Parade, placing flags on veterans' gravesites, recognizing outstanding Verona police officers, firefighters, and EMT personnels- personnel, collecting and disposing of unserviceable flags, assisting in the funding of Badger Honor flights, hosting public music events, the Poppy Program, and donating resources to Camp American Legion. And whereas, the Mason-Lindsey American Legion Family will host an open house featuring information and displays about local veterans, military artifacts, and history on August 18th, 2019. Now therefore, I, Luke Diaz, Mayor of the City of Verona, do hereby proclaim August 18th, 2019, as American Legion Day in the City of Verona, and I invite all citizens to attend the open house and to join me in this recognition. And if we could just have a round of applause at this moment for the American Legion members in the audience. And if I may, thank you for your service, and I believe we have a signed copy of the proclamation as well. Excellent. Thank you. And with that, we will move on to 6B, under Mayor's Business, which is a presentation by the Police and Fire Commission Chair regarding the fire chief recruitment.
Hi. My name's Delora Newton, and I am the current president of the Verona Police and Fire Commission. I've been on there, I can't even remember exactly how long, somewhere between 15 and 20 years. So I'm the longest-serving commissioner on there right now. So I just kind of wanted to give you an overview of what we're doing, what we're doing for the process of hiring the fire chief, to give you an idea of what's going on. So I've got some comments here that I wanted to share. So, Chapter 62 of the Wisconsin statutes provide authority for the Police and Fire Commission to manage recruitment and hiring of the fire chief and police chief as well. The PFC has exclusive domain of appointments and promotions within the Police and Fire Departments. But that being said, the Common Council and the mayor, you set the salary, you set the benefits package, and then the mayor has supervisory authority over the chiefs for daily operations. So even though we do the hiring process, you play an important role as well, and so we want to recognize that. So we want to kind of work with you so that you are familiar with what's going on and insert, or not insert, but have your input where appropriate and where we can do that. So the Police and Fire Commission met on August 1st, August 1st, to begin the process. We asked Mitch Weckerly, the Verona HR Coordinator, to prepare and publish the job posting, and that posting was done, I believe, on August the 7th? The 8th. It was posted on August, the 7th, with applications due on September the 8th. So the Police and Fire Commission reviewed the current job description that was approved by the city administrator and the Police and Fire Commission back in 2013, and we kept that intact. We didn't make any changes. So you can see what that is, because that's a matter of record. We also asked Mitch to solicit feedback from fire department staff related to job-related competencies that will enable selected candidates to perform the assigned responsibilities successfully and be the best fit for the Verona Fire Department. We did briefly discuss holding some kind of a public input session, and it was decided that the people who really would have the most invested and would really want to provide input would be members of the current fire department, and so we're doing that via email. So Mitch can explain that more if you want in detail later, but he put out an email to everybody in the Verona Fire Department, offering to have them either send emails or comments, or emails or ask for meetings with either he or Adam or both, to just kind of give their input, and then they're going to compile that, probably without names, but to just kind of get the overall theme of what the comments were and then share with the Police and Fire Commission. So we have that for our consideration. And then, as far as gathering input from you, the council and the mayor, one of the things that we did when Chief Coughlin was hired, we had used a consultant for that process back, I can't even remember exactly how long ago he was hired. But the suggestion was that once we came up with our top two to three candidates, and we had three at the time, to have an informal gathering where we would invite the city council and the mayor. Of course, it would be public notice, so the public would have the opportunity to come as well. It's not an interview process, it's just an informal meet and greet, but it gave the council members at the time and the mayor at the time, city staff at the time, a chance to mix and mingle with those candidates in an informal setting. It also gave us the chance to see how well they acted in a public setting, because that's going to be an important part of the job as well, not just how well do they know the ins and outs of being a fire chief, but what's their persona when it comes to the public as well. So, and then after that, we invited then feedback from the council and the mayor and city staff to tell us what they thought of the different candidates. And that, I think, at the time, made the council and the mayor's office feel like they had some role in selecting the final candidate, and so we would like to offer that to you as well. Of course, we don't have dates or anything at this point, but we'll work on that later on if that's something that you would like. So that's all that I had to tell you formally. That's all I know of the process at this point in time, but I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions from the council? Seeing none. Well, thank you very much for the explanation.
Thank you.
Next, we will move on to item seven, which is announcements. Anyone from the Common Council have any announcements? Alder Journey?
So as a member of the, retired member of the Uniform Services, the Army, I want to thank you for your proclamation recognizing the American Legion, and specifically the Mason-Lindsey Post along with the auxiliary. Growing up in a small town in Wisconsin, the American Legion was a prominent player in our community, as I think is the case in most of our communities, and is a continual reminder to us how fortunate we are to have these soldiers, sailors, airmen, marines, now members of our community, and extending their service in full support of our community. And thank you for that.
Thank you, Alder Journey. Other announcements from the council? Seeing none. We will move on to item eight, which is the administrative report. Mr. Sayer?
Thank you. Upcoming meetings that we have, as we started tonight at Finance Committee meeting to start talking about operating budgets. We'll have a meeting on the 19th of August and also on the 26th of the August to continue those conversations with department heads. Active public hearings that we have, we have one right now for 300 East Verona Avenue. They're looking at a zoning map amendment to allow an office showroom and then two apartments on the property. The CDA, Community Development Authority, will meet on August 22nd at 7:00 PM, discuss the Sugar Creek Elementary School property. Concept plans that were presented to the CDA on July 18th have been posted to the city's website. We're also in the process of scheduling and planning a, actually, open house that night on August 22nd from 5:00 to 7:00, where the public can come and comment on the further refined comments that CDS has put together. So there'll be information going out on that here in the coming days. Just a reminder, the first day of school is August 23rd. UGM this year for Epic is early. It's August 26th through the 29th. And then finally, Wisconsin Ironman is September 8th. So those are going to be busy days around town and around the city just because of school starting and then those events. We did receive our net new construction numbers from the state, and these are preliminary, but as of this year, we're looking at a 1.56% increase in net new construction. Just for comparison purposes, that is lower than the past few years. 2018, we had a 3.86% increase in 2017, a 7.5. 2016, 9.6. 2015, 6%. And then 2014 was a 15.5% increase. So just a reminder, as we start talking about budgets this year, I made this comment last, this, tonight I read at the Finance Committee meeting, at the Finance Committee meeting, but this is going to be a tight budget. Our net new construction is significantly lower than the last few years, so it's going to be a tight budget that will have some challenging decisions associated with it. Fireman's Park, the last day Fireman's Park Beach will be open is August 25th. The splash pad will remain open a week or two past Labor Day. That will be dependent upon weather and just how warm or how cold it is. We continue to work with the state on the TIF fix. I've requested information from Senator Urban Box's office on kind of where that is at. They were at a recess, so I'm, I dig the response, and they are looking into just the status of the bill that was introduced. Once I have an update for the council, I'll share that. And then finally, we had employee anniversaries that were listed in the report, and I'd be happy to answer any questions from the council.
Questions for Mr. Sayer on the administrative's report. Alder Cronin?
I just had a question on the proposed development at 300 West Verona. There's a pretty old tree on that property. Is that being taken into consideration in the design of this development?
300 East Verona Avenue?
Yeah.
Okay. Just want to make sure that's the same property. So they're looking at, they're looking at just reusing the existing house, so the house would stay the same, and they would add a garage at the back. So, as far as I know, the tree's not being touched, but I, I don't, off the top of my head, I don't recall exactly what they're doing with it, but they're trying to fix that property up and make it look better than what it is today.
Other questions on the administrative's report? Seeing none, we will move on to item nine, the engineer's report. Ms. Fisher?
Thank you. For the well 6 pumping station construction, air development is complete for the new well. Test pumping equipment will be installed as the next step in the construction of well 6. For the Verona Area High School, construction has started on the traffic improvement project associated with the new high school. Traffic signals at West Verona Ave and West End Circle have been turned off, and the traffic control placed for stage one of the West Verona Avenue construction. Embankment fill for the widening of West Verona Avenue has commenced. For County Highway M reconstruction, the contractor has completed the sanitary sewer installation for the City of Verona work and is working through the punch list items. Water main installation for the city is complete, and testing of the installed mains is currently ongoing. Punch list items for the water main has been, have been developed. For the County Highway M/Liberty Drive/Thousand Oaks Trail traffic signals, the contractor is substantially complete and is working on drainage and erosion mat repairs. For the 2019 Streets Rehabilitation Project, all curb and gutter has been poured. Asphalt has been pulverized and graded. Landscaping is complete, and the pavement is scheduled to be placed starting August 7th and completed by the end of the week, so last week. And finally, for the County Highway PD Woods Road to County Highway M project that's upcoming, the contracts have been sent out for signature to the contractor. City staff is working on a schedule. A pre-construction conference will be scheduled for mid-August, and a public information meeting will be scheduled for mid-August as well. And construction is anticipated to begin in early September. And with that, I can take any questions?
Questions on the engineer's report. Alder Cole?
With the construction starting in September, is, do you think it will be finished by late fall, or is that something that's just going to continue into next year, the PD project?
That will continue into next year.
Okay, thanks.
Other questions on the engineer's report? Seeing none. We will move on to item 10, committee reports. First up, under 10A, we have Finance Committee. Alder Kemp?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First, I'd like to make a motion for the payment of the bills in the amount of $1,476,967.73.
Motion by Alder Kemp. Is there a second?
Okay.
Seconded by Alder Cronin. Alder Kemp?
First, we have a large payment of $254,443.61 for the County Trunk M, Thousand Oaks and Liberty Drive traffic project. We also have another $111,032 in our third quarter transmit dues. We have a well 6 project that's $314,974.33, and also a payment for Fireman's Park in the amount of $189,663.96.
You've heard the explanation. Questions, comments on the motion? Seeing none. All those in favor of paying the bills in the amount specified, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. And that motion passes. Anything further, Alder Kemp?
Nothing further. Thank you.
Next, we have 10B Plan Commission. Who's handling this one? Mr. Sayer?
Thank you. The first item is a resolution approving a conditional use permit to allow a community information sign for the Verona Area School District at the southeast corner of West Verona Avenue and West End Circle. The proposed conditional use permit will allow for the construction of a community information sign for the Verona Area School District at the southeast corner of West Verona Avenue and West End Circle. The proposed sign would be located on city-owned property and require a property use agreement. The property use agreement will handle, among other things, the stormwater pipe extension, sanitary sewer concerns, and a future utility, and future utility maintenance. A conditional, a condition of approval will require the school district to enter into this agreement with the city. The Plan Commission held a required public hearing on August 5th of 2019 and voted 5 to 0 to recommend for the approval with the following conditions. One, the conditional use permit shall become effective upon the school district and the city executing a property use agreement. And two, the proposed conditional use permit shall be in compliance with the property use agreement.
Thank you for that explanation. Questions, comments, or motions? Alder Touche?
Question, does this sign require power?
Yes, it will have a electronic message center in it, and it'll also have a portion of the, where it says, Verona Area School District, that'll be backlit as well.
And I'm assuming that's going to be under the school's utilities. Is that fair?
Correct. So I believe they've stubbed conduit to this already, or they've run the wire as well.
And then lastly, since it is on city property as far as maintenance and upkeep, I mean, I can't imagine the school's going to let it look disheveled, but is there something in there to just ensure that we can enforce that it stays looking nice?
Yep. Well, we can, we can make sure there's language in that property use agreement.
Perfect. Thank you.
Other questions, comments? Alder Riki?
I just want to make sure that this has been run by Public Safety, just to make sure that there's no visibility for motorist issues with the sign.
Mr. Sayer?
So we, we've talked about it a few times. The initial location they looked at for the sign was actually in the right-of-way, so we did have them pull it out of the right-of-way for kind of that concern that you raised. The setback for the sign now, and I'm rambling, trying to find it, the setback along, it's located approximately 55 feet from West End Circle, and then 28 feet from half-mile road. So it, it's going to be set back a considerable distance from the road. So from a visibility standpoint and kind of the vision triangle, we have no issues with it. It's backaways.
Alder Cole?
Is the sign going to be constructed and used prior to the high school being completed? Like, do they intend, have the intent on using it, like, for this upcoming school year, or is it, they're going to wait for a while?
Well, we still need to enter in this property use agreement. I think it's going to depend on the timing of that, of how quickly that can get done. I think the intent would be to make sure it's complete before the school year, the school opens. So I would suspect as, kind of, soon as they can start construction on it, they will.
Thanks.
Any other questions or comments or motions? Alder Touche?
I want to make a motion to recommend approval for Resolution Number R-19-036 approving a conditional use permit for a community information sign to be located at the southeast corner of West Verona Avenue and West End Circle.
Does that include the two conditions that were recommended?
Yes, it does. Thank you.
Okay. Motion by Alder Touche. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Alder Cole. Anything to add, Alder Touche?
Nothing.
I did want to add one thing and say that it has been made quite clear to the school district that the sign is going on public utilities, and that obviously, if there was ever a need to work on the utilities, we would, we would do what we could to not damage the sign, but say if there was an emergency with flooding, and we, the city or whoever needed to go in there in an emergency, we're going in, and the sign isn't going to be a concern. So that's been made clear to the school district as well. Any other questions or comments on the motion? Seeing none. All those in favor of Resolution Number R-19-036, approving a conditional use permit for a community information sign to be located at the southeast corner of West Verona Avenue and West End Circle with the two conditions specified, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. And that motion passes. Next, we'll move on to 10C, Public Works Sewer and Water Committee. Alder Touche?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. At this time, I'm making a motion to approve change order number one for Project ID 2018-107, County Highway M, Liberty Drive Traffic Signals.
Motion by Alder Touche. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Alder Kemp. Alder Touche?
By way of explanation, integrity grading and excavating is nearing completion of the traffic signals at County Highway M, Liberty Drive and Thousand Oaks Trail. Change order number one is to rectify lighting quantities for the work completed to date. ATC notified the city of clearance issues between their overhead transmission line and the proposed street light poles to be constructed. City submitted the plans ATC, or, by way of going back, city had submitted plans ATC well in advance of the project being put out to bid, but received no comments from ATC. It was only after AECom scheduled a pre-construction conference did ATC come back and realize that there were some clearance issues. So because of that, we have a change order of $3,597, which is an add to this project with a final construction value of $579,708.96. Please note that if ATC had actually informed us in time, this would have actually already been included in our bid request. So it is more expensive, but it was something we would have had incurred one way or another.
Thank you for that explanation. Questions, comments on the motion? Seeing none. All those in favor of change order number one for Project 2018-107, County M/Liberty Drive Traffic Signals, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. And that motion passes. Alder Touche?
Next up, item 10C2. I am making a motion for a lease agreement with Verizon for the water tower at 1252 Hemlock Drive.
Motion by Alder Touche. Is there a second?
Second.
I'm going to say seconded by Alder Kemp. Alder Touche?
By way of explanation, our staff has been working with Verizon on a lease agreement for rental for tower space at Tower 3 located near Country View Elementary School. The lease agreement follows the city's lease format executed with other carriers currently located in the city facilities. Highlights of this agreement include a five-year term, renewal for four additional success, successive five-year terms unless the tenant provides landlord written notice, and upfront cost for execution at least of $16,100. Once all their equipment is on board, we will have a $2,300 lease with a 3% escalation every year. Action shall be contingent upon legal review of the lease agreement.
Thank you for that explanation. Questions, comments on the motion? Just to clarify, the, the, the motion was contingent upon legal-
It was. My apologies on the motion. I missed that. Thank you.
And that was the understanding of the second as well? Okay. All right. Questions, comments on the motion? Alder Journey?
I'm just curious, is already a Verizon on, on the tower, or is this something new?
This is new for this water tower.
Okay.
So essentially, they're reserving the space for a year. They're going to give us $16,000 for that reservation, and then once they put their equipment on, a monthly rent will be $2,300.
Further questions or comments on the motion? Seeing none. All those in favor of the lease agreement with Verizon for the water tower at 1252 Hemlock Drive with the conditions specified, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. And that motion passes. Alder Touche?
Next up is 10C3. At committee level, we decided to put this item on hold and tabled it for our next meeting. At committee level, we had some concerns about the mailboxes. So I want to explain what was proposed to us and then share the committee's concerns that we essentially are sending back to Plan Commission for review. In 2012, the United States Postal Service updated their postal operations manual with a focus on modes of delivery. The USPS will no longer be delivering mail to individual mailboxes for single-family residences, but it's required coordination with the local postmaster to determine where cluster mailbox units should be located, as you pick, as shown in some photos in our attached material, if you want to look at it. Lot of the, some of the highlights are it's privately owned mailboxes, so they're clusters of 30 mailboxes. They need to be installed outside of public right-of-way and installed in a concrete pad behind the sidewalk. During our committee's discussion, we really, we have one of these already in Verona. I can't remember the exact neighborhood it was in, but we asked about it, and really, the real, the, the safety concern came winter time. And what was the condition of mailbox? What was the condition around it with snow removal and such? And we learned that snow removal hadn't been done very well, and people were having to climb over mounds of snow to get to their mailbox. Being someone who, just some personal experience with my mother, who I just moved into a senior living place, she's doing well, but wanted something a little easier to manage, I kept picturing her trying to get to her mailbox climbing over a snow mound. And I have some real concerns about the clearing of snow and making it safe for all people getting to their mail. And I understand that the US Postal Service wants to make things cheaper and more efficient for themselves, but I feel like until our city has a plan in place to ensure that these mailboxes are easily accessible by our residents, I'm not in favor. The committee decided it wasn't the time to approve of this ordinance, so we're sending it back.
Thank you for that explanation. Questions, comments on this item? Oh, sorry, Alder Cole?
Is this requirement by the USPS, does anybody know, is this an actual law that is required, or is this just like a policy? I mean, if we just end up deciding not to pass this ordinance, will they just not deliver mail? Like, how does this?
So they're going to require this regardless of what you do with it. So if you choose not to require this, they will still require these to be placed in new developments. So as we talk about Whispering Coves and then the Gus property, those, those types of developments, the postal service will take the position that, that this is required, and this is across the board in the Madison area. So I think as you kind of, as we look at this as a whole, you know, I think Catherine's going to- So I think as you kind of, as we look at this as a whole, you know, I think Catherine's going to reach out to the postmaster tomorrow and kind of start the conversation of trying to get some of the guidance and kind of handle some of the comments from the committee. At the end of the day, my understanding is this is a requirement from the postal service and it's either, you know, take or leave it. I mean, you have a choice of having mailboxes or you're not going to get mailboxes. And city staff isn't too happy about this. Developers are really not happy about this. Nobody wants it. But I think it comes down to, as Alder Person Touche said, it's the efficiency for the postal service to deliver mail. So, you know, this all started with, you used to have door service, then it went to single mailboxes at your house. Then they had two mailboxes on one post. Then if you go in Scenic Ridge and Cathedral Point and other places, you see four mailboxes on one post. This all has been kind of transitioning over the years as mail delivery, you know, becomes more expensive and, you know, you get more packages. So I don't, you know, Catherine's going to look into this. I don't see this, you know, end of the day, I think we're probably stuck with this, just like Madison is, just like Sumpere is, just like Wanakee is. But we're going to look into it and try and investigate more into it. I know a couple developers have reached out and tried to find ways around this as well. They've hit brick walls. But we're going to see what we can do. But I'm not overly optimistic we can find a workaround, but, because it's coming from them. But I think one of the questions from the committee, and correct me if I'm wrong, I had a thirty-second conversation with Catherine, was, you know, can we regulate how many boxes go into these? You know, I think Alder Touche referenced thirty. Is there a certain requirement? Do they have to be twenties, thirties, tens, fifteens? What is the specified requirement? And trying to get that actually, is it codified or is this a policy that they have out there? So we're going to go back and try to get that information, see kind of how far we can, how much we can put into this ordinance and what's allowed by their standards and what's not. And we'll see what we can do. But it's something nobody wants and we're kind of stuck, unfortunately.
Any other questions or comments on this topic? Seeing none, we'll move on to C4. Mr. Touche.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Final item, 10C4. I make a motion to approve an agreement with Dane County for construction of County Highway M.
Motion by Alder Touche. Is there a second? Second by Alder Cronin. Alder Touche.
I'm going to actually take a punt and skip the notes and explain my understanding of what's going on. This project is being handled by Wisconsin Department of Transportation. And their part of the responsibility is they are supposed to be billing each of the entities that are involved in building County, or are building this portion of County Highway M out. Unfortunately, they made a accounting error and not only gave Verona, Verona's portion of the bill, but they also included Dane County's portion of the bill. And it was determined that the best way to rectify the bill was to allow the city of Verona to build Dane County and get our money back out of Dane County. Dane County agreed with this, and we're really just kind of going through a formality process to get our money back.
Makes sense. Thank you for that explanation. Questions, comments on the motion? Seeing none. All those in favor of the agreement with Dane County for construction of County Highway M, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? No. And that motion passes. Anything further, Alder Touche?
That is all from Public Works.
Excellent. We'll move on to 10D Personnel Committee. Mr. Sayre.
So this is an amendment to the city administrative policy number four, which is our personnel policy regarding tuition reimbursement. We are requesting amendments to the tuition reimbursement policy to include updates to the eligibility requirements, the establishment of procedure for employees' request tuition reimbursement, and a provision that would require employees who voluntarily terminate employment within two years of receiving a tuition reimbursement to repay the city a portion of the funds received. Changes to the eligibility requirements require eligible employees to be full-time and have satisfactory job performance. The coursework must be taken at an accredited institution, and employees must receive at least a three-point, three-point zero GPA in the class to receive the reimbursement. Procedurally, employees will be required to request the pre-approval for the reimbursement. Prior to the class starting, employees will submit the request for the reimbursement to the department head. If budget funds are available, the department head will forward the request to the HR coordinator, who will verify all eligibility requirements are met and approve the request. The maximum amount of reimbursement an employee can receive is six hundred dollars per budget year. Personnel committee meeting, Personnel Committee discussed this on July 24th and voted two to zero to recommend for approval. They made a couple of kind of tweaks and changes at that meeting, one of which being kind of related to GPA requirement. And I think staff had recommended a, I think a two-point-five, and they bumped that up to a three-point-oh. And then also just process-wise, we initially had the request coming to the Personnel Committee to kind of get that pre-approval. The committee felt comfortable kind of cutting that out of the process to make this more efficient and basically giving department heads and the HR coordinator authorization to kind of move forward with these. Ultimately, the committee will be responsible for approving the reimbursement, but at least the initial pre-approvals can be done by department heads and staff. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions from the council.
Alder Touche.
Thank you. It seems like the criteria is if there's budget funds available. Can we include, and the department head deems it appropriate for their role?
Correct. As part of this is a sign-off by the department head. So the department head would need to sign off on the form before it would get to the HR coordinator. So it's actually an application that has to be filled out identifying where the employee would be taking the courses and what coursework it would be actually be, you know, be occurring in to kind of head off your concern of making sure it's being, you know, in the right area and it's being pre-approved before the person takes the class.
And that makes sense. I'm just looking, and maybe this is just a nice summary versus the actual wording. If this is the actual wording, I would still like to see approval from the department head included, because it just feels like, just need my budget and fill out the form. So I'm just, some people will read this word for word, and I'm far from being an attorney, but that one jumped out at me.
Yeah, sorry. And then Alder Journey.
I just had something to add that, I think addresses that in the procedure section. It talks about, the employees need to submit the completed application to their department head for recommendation to approve or deny. So that's kind of one of the first steps in the process. And then the two of them will work together and create a form as well. It has a section for justification, tying in how the course is job-related. So that's addressed there in the, I guess, the procedural area. Kind of a similar concept. But we could always put that also into, into the eligibility section as well, if that would.
I would like it just because, because people, I've seen people just try to read the letter, what they see in words and try to say, well, this is all I need. And I can fill out the form whether it's approved or not. So I don't know. Maybe I'm playing too much devil's advocate here, so that's all.
Alder Journey.
So I think the intent is, is that the director would actually approve. The employee would submit to the director. The director would, based upon performance, and then also the program would approve. And if, and also it could be a budget line item that could be carried in that department for tuition reimbursement. Originally, we had it going to the Personnel Committee, but we thought that this would be an unnecessary step with the appropriate department head being the sign-off on the request.
Yeah, I think the other idea was really to have the employees and department heads to start having that conversation too and planning ahead.
I get that. It's just, funds are available and the department head approves, blah, blah, blah. That's all I'm asking.
Well, we don't have a motion before us, so if someone wanted to make a motion? Alder Touche.
I will make a motion to approve the amendment to the city administrative policy number four, personnel policy regarding tuition reimbursement, with the addition to the requirement being department head approval along with budget funds.
Motion by Alder Touche. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alder Journey, I think, yes. Anything further to add, Alder Touche?
None.
We have a motion before us. Questions, comments on the motion? Alder opposing?
Sorry, I had one additional question. So regarding, as we're looking at budgeting for the upcoming year and beyond, is this taken into account with the training budgets for the different departments? This tuition, or is this more personnel-driven, that they have something they're motivated to do that might relate to what they do, but isn't necessarily what we're budgeting for already?
I think the intent is outside of that training. So the training is kind of more appropriate for kind of building the skills they have now. This is more looking at outside education from like a university or some type of schooling that they might possibly be looking at. So I think the training, both these items would be kind of different items versus the education. The training would be separate in my eyes.
So where, when we're talking about this six hundred dollars in the budget or up to per employee, where is that actually falling?
It'd be a line item in the budget.
Okay.
I don't have the number in front of me, but there'd be, I mean, we've only done this, we've got one right now. I mean, so we, this isn't a common occurrence. I think part of it is, you know, one, you know, so I think a few points here tonight of trying to get in front of these and getting them pre-approved, not mid-budget year where there's no funds for it. So that's why I think we're trying to get this driven into of getting it planned, getting it budgeted, and then doing it the following year. But it would be a separate line item though, and we have that in the budget for that department right now, that we have an employee who's taking advantage of this. So utilizing, not taking advantage, utilizing the program. But it would be a separate line item. But you're not going to see it too often unless an employee and department have identified a need for this.
Okay. So it'd be identified the year prior through conversations and then?
Correct.
Okay.
Yes.
Thank you.
Alder Journey.
And just one additional comment then, is that the coursework should be, have a direct application to whatever the job or position is, and that it would supplement their contribution to their workplace.
Motion before the body. Any other questions or comments on the motion? Seeing none. All those in favor of the amendment to city administrative policy number four, personnel policy regarding tuition reimbursement with the conditions specified by Alder Touche, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? No. And that motion passes. Next, we're on eleven old business. I, with unanimous consent of the body, I'd like to handle this one last, because I think it's going to take the longest. And we could potentially clear out some other things and maybe let a few people go home. So with that, I'm going to, seeing no objections. With that, I'm going to move on to twelve new business, and we'll start with 12A, which is discussion and possible action regarding the Verona Area School District Transportation Project Scope and Cost Analysis of Estimates vs. Bid Results. Mr. Jacobson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Can everyone hear me okay? I got the sniffles and my deep voice, and I just want to make sure Andy's getting all this over there. So Jess, you might want to be an arm's length away. Mr. Bill Meyer to my left here, your right, I will, him and I are going to tag-team the, kind of the brief presentation tonight, and then we'll open this up to questions for the council. So ultimately, the Verona Area School District requested a meeting that occurred on May 2nd between staff, city staff and VASD staff in regards to the bid results that were obtained on April 25th, 2019 at their bid opening. Ultimately, and I'm going to back up here, during the development, the preparation and execution of the developers agreement between the Verona Area School District and the city of Verona that occurred in, I'll just say, June of 2018. Estimates were prepared by city staff and presented to the council. It was ultimately used in the execution of the traffic allocation model and the cost estimates. We estimated the overall cost to be nine point three million. I'll say that again, nine point three million with all the contingencies. There was two sets of contingencies in there. The base bid that was opened on April 25th of 2019 for the Verona Area School District Transportation Project was six point eight million. And that ultimately also included five hundred thousand in water main improvements that are necessary for the school district project that benefit the property. And so that was, that five hundred thousand is not included in the traffic allocation model. So when you actually do a delta, the difference between, for the traffic improvements based on what our estimates and what the bids were, you're comparing nine point three to six point three, so a difference of three million. These estimates that the city and AECom prepared in the fall of seventeen, spring of eighteen, were done based off of planning level documents. No design was done. But you take contingencies into account when you're preparing estimates for a ultimate construction project, very similar to me presenting the capital improvement program to you. There's a project at hand. You're estimating it based off of known knowledge of the industry, what the project entails and what the goals are. There's always going to be challenges, changes as design commences. And that's where contingency comes into play to ultimately have a successful project budget and have a solid outcome. So I'll let Mr. Bill Meyer talk about some of the items that we identified as a staff level. And I'll quit talking here so you can move forward.
See, as a summary, city staff recommends maintaining the scope in the developers agreement as shown in the plans that were prepared in bid, with a couple of exceptions that I'll talk through in a second. The plan provides for public safety at the intersections and roadways surrounding the school. The plan also provides connectivity not only for cars, but for bikes and pedestrians to get to and from the school and the surrounding neighborhoods across Verona Avenue. We did find some, we did find some reductions to save the school district a little bit of money that doesn't affect the ultimate goals of the project. So there were four things identified. The first was suggested by the school district as a reduction was reducing the amount of landscaping along the streets. So they planned to plant every other tree that was in the plans. We thought that that was acceptable. The other three were developed by the city staff. The first was removing the temporary traffic signal at West End Circle and Verona Avenue. So that was one that Carla mentioned earlier in the engineer's report, that it's currently running as a stop sign. And that saved some money for the temporary signaling for the duration of construction. We also moved some hard-wire connections between the signals that are adjacent to West End Circle. So we were putting in some conduit, so in the future we could connect the signals at the 151 ramps and Nine Mount Road. So we've taken out that conduit. Then lastly, we've removed the dimming on the street lighting, as we thought that wasn't, wasn't a requirement. Overall, those four things save about two hundred thousand dollars based on the bid prices, so a savings for the school district.
Any, anything else to add, or?
Go ahead, Mr. Mayor.
Any questions or comments from the council? Alder Journey?
Just so I understand, so the original bid of nine point three million, that, that was the thought of the city? Is what the proposal would be? And then they came up under as far as the bid was concerned?
The city prepared and cost us, AECom and the city for the execution of the developers agreement estimated nine point three million as estimates. And then the Verona Area School District and their consultant, JSD, prepared their own estimates, and how they used those was unknown until we had these meetings in May, and then ultimately another one in June of this year, and their estimate was five point eight million. So there's a difference in estimates, of course. And if I was proposing that project to the council, we would have used the nine point three, just as we estimated before. So that's where the difference comes into play.
Alder Kemp?
What are they asking us to do at this point?
The meeting that we had on May 2nd was ultimately to reduce the, reduce the scope and identify items that they felt could have been removed. So the meeting on May 2nd occurred, and then there was a supplemental meeting that I had. Mr. Bill Meyer and I had with VASD's consultant that they identified certain items that they felt were out of scope or project enhancements. And those are identified in the attachments of the long narrative that was supplied in the packet that we prepared. And we looked at those items, and those are elements. elements that were identified in the goals of the project, in the scope of the developers' agreement. That's where the design challenges, changes come into play when you're taking a planning level project to a full design, when you're doing estimates, and that's where the contingencies come into play. So ultimately, they were looking at, there were certain items that they felt should be reduced to ultimately reduce the cost.
And the, and the removal of these items doesn't do anything to harm or to, to cause issue with public safety, do they?
The items that they identified are still in the package, the construction package. The items that city staff identified were not identified by JSD. We identified those to reduce the cost for them. And the items that we identified do not affect public safety. So the ultimate goals for operation and traffic capacity are there.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Yep.
Alder Touche?
I got a couple of questions. The $9.3 million estimate that you had come up with, was that ever shared with the school district?
Yes, it's one of the attachments that's in the narrative. I think it's, I can tell you in a second here. Appendix C, that's the email distribution of the cost analysis and traffic allocation. I think it was late February of '18. I could pull up the report here, but I thought I'd be able to talk.
No. So, did they ever comment on it, like, you're crazy, we think our 5 million is good, or?
We did not get any comments back on the allocation.
Okay. Are you at liberty to say or point out any of the items that they thought were worth reducing, that at this time, that I just will kind of want to hear their ideas? I mean, yours or ideas are, I appreciate them, just is there anything worth pointing out, or?
I, I got them identified in the narrative, what the items are, and one of them was the pavement replacement on West Verona Avenue between West End Circle and Nine Mound Road. That's ultimately a constructibility challenge for the development of the turn lanes at each of the intersections for the signalization of Nine Mound, and then the widening of West Verona Avenue to urbanize it, put the sidewalk and bike path on the south side, and then also the second, the twin westbound left turn lane to the school district entrance.
So they didn't want the sidewalk or the bike paths? Is that what I just heard?
The sidewalk was one of the items on the north side they identified, and those are in Appendix E and F, that you can see in the, in the, in the report. And I identified those throughout the narrative, the items that they identified, and then the response from the, from AECOM and I on why they shall remain.
They haven't explained why, that's fair. And did you guys end up doing any of the math to determine if, if you did execute on those items, if that did save them 3.5 million dollars?
No, we did not do math on it, and it would not save them.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Yep.
Alder Posey?
So, my question is, the message that you're receiving, is it that these things aren't necessary, or that they're not willing to pay for them, and that it's more shifting the payment? Because reading through all this, it feels like a lot of this is necessary, knowing how busy that area is getting, and already is and is going to just continue to be. And for safety of pedestrians, safety of drivers, especially young drivers, looking at all this, this is really necessary. So is it the statement more, this just needs to shift over to the city, or is the statement that it's not necessary?
I think they were trying to, I don't want to speak for what they were thinking, but what, how it was presented to us. They were focused on a, what the scope was, the perceived scope from a meeting that occurred back in March of 2008, where city staff, I was there, and AECOM was there, and JSD was there, that identified, we looked at the project whole and compared quantities of how, what the goals were, and how we, so there wasn't any project overlap, meaning here's an area here, did we double count quantities of a certain leg of the project? Because as you know, there's multiple areas that are being improved. So it's, you're doing quantities for a certain segment of road, and then you're doing quantities for another segment of road, to make sure there wasn't any duplicate counting, overlap, or misinterpreted data that had been shared, because there was a lot of data that was shared between the school district and their representatives, and then city staff. I think they're identifying areas that they felt could be reduced, and we do not agree.
So in 2018, everybody was clear of the scope of the project?
Yes.
And what was included in the scope?
Yep.
It was included in the developers' agreement that we signed with them. The scope was included in that, correct?
Thank you.
Yes.
I'm just going to kind of call on myself, and I'll call on Alder Kemp, but I just want to say thank you to everyone who worked to reduce costs. I know everyone's busy, but I think it's important, you know, despite some of the bumps in the relationship, I think it's important that the city and school work together, and I really appreciate all of you working to help them reduce costs. I think the sidewalk is essential, kids are going to walk to that school, and there needs to be a sidewalk. I don't know, I don't, I don't know. And then finally, just to kind of echo what Alder Posey said, this is, all been in the developers' agreement since it was signed, nothing has changed. It, 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 once the agreement's been signed, it's kind of, you know, planning proceeds as if it was a signed legal agreement, which it is, and, and the, I guess, to me, it would have been a lot better to hear these objections before the agreement was signed, as opposed to much, much, much later. Alder Kemp?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I also would like to, to expound a little bit on what the mayor said. I do appreciate what you guys are doing to try and keep some of the costs down. I do have to say, it, it is a little frustrating now at this point. I have, believe it or not, run up and down West Verona Avenue. It's not entirely safe, so I can't imagine school-aged children, even though they're high schoolers, walking up and down there. And then the idea of high school drivers on there with some kids walking across that street, I live over in that neighborhood. So, you know, the idea or the notion that we're going to try and save some money by removing a sidewalk at this point is a little bit frustrating and short-sighted. And I think, as, as the mayor already said, these are things that, you review this before you, you know, you sign an agreement. And, and those are the things that, in my, in my job, I have to do every day. Everyone up here has an obligation to their employer. You review them beforehand, and if there's things that you don't agree with, then you have a discussion about it. But if it's already in there, we, we need to proceed as planned. So I, I just, they have to do a better job to be very honest and to be very frank, because I don't think we can sacrifice the safety of, of children because of these kinds of oversights. And this is something we've been dealing with now for a few years, and it's just a little frustrating at this point.
Any other questions or comments? Seeing none. Thank you for the explanation.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council members.
Thank you.
I'm going to go to 12C before we loop back to the two closed session things. So we have Discussion and Possible Action Regarding Approval of the Operator Licenses. Clerk Clark.
Need a motion, please, to approve the operator licenses as presented by the city clerk?
Motion by Alder Ricky, is there a second? Seconded by Alder Kemp. All those in favor of approving the operator licenses as presented by the clerk, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. And the operator licenses are approved. Next, we'll move on to 12B, which is Discussion and Possible Action Regarding a Potential Development and Use of Public Funds for a Development Project to be Located at the Southeast Corner of Wayland Road and Liberty Drive Located in Liberty Business Park. Mr. Sayer, can you give us some explanation for open session?
Sure. So city staff was approached by affiliated construction services, ACS, and they're looking at constructing a new headquarters facility at the southeast corner of the future extension of Liberty Drive and Wayland Road. The new headquarters would be used for manufacturing of engine testing equipment, and that will include light manufacturing space and administrative office space. As part of the project, ACS has identified the need for tax incremental financing, TIF, and staff is requesting a closed session discussion with the common council regarding their request.
Any questions or comments for open session from the council? Seeing none. Motion to move into closed session would be in order. Alder Cole?
Make a motion to move into closed session regarding the potential development and use of public funds for a development project to be located at the southeast corner of Wayland Road and Liberty Drive Located in Liberty Business Park. The common council may convene in closed session as authorized by Wisconsin Statute 19.85, Pron 1, Pron E, for the purpose of deliberating or negotiating the purchase of public properties, the investing of public funds, or conducting other specified public business, whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session. The common council may reconvene in open session and take action on this item.
Motion by Alder Cole, is there a second? Seconded by Alder Cronin. This is, of course, a roll call vote.
Alder Journey?
Aye.
Alder Kemp?
Aye.
Alder Cole?
Aye.
Alder Posey?
Aye.
Alder Ricky?
Aye.
Alder Touche?
Aye.
Alder Cronin?
Aye.
And we will go, move into closed session as soon as we're off the air. And we will go, move into closed session as soon as we're off the air.
Actually, it looks like we are back on. We had a good discussion but came to no decision. And we're going to continue the process. Any other questions or comments on that item? All right, we will, seeing none, we will move back to 11, Old Business, which is discussion and possible action regarding discussing the background of the city administrator candidate. As well as a potential, if necessary, discussion to discuss the consideration of other possible candidates. And we will wait till our HR director is in the room, which he should be shortly. Probably should give them back to Adam. Mitch, we're on the item, so.
It's your turn.
Yep, so if there's anything to say in open session? Yeah. Yeah, we could say a few things. A few things in open session, just where we're at. Into my, on microphone.
All right, so we are in the stage of the recruitment process for the city administrator where the background check has been complete for our finalists. So at this time, we'll be discussing the results of that and kind of making a decision on whether or not we'd like to proceed with that candidate. Moving forward with that candidate or any other next steps we may need to take.
Thank you. Any questions or comments for open session? Seeing none, a motion to move into closed session would be in order. Alder Touche?
I would like to make a motion to move in closed session to discuss the background of city administrator candidate.
And then you read the.
Oh, keep going, sorry. I was waiting for a second already. All right, the common council may convene in closed session for a discussion of possible action regarding city administrator recruitment as authorized by section 19.85-1-C of the Wisconsin statutes to consider employment promotion, compensation, or performance evaluation data of any public employee subject to the jurisdiction or authority of the city of Verona. The common council may reconvene in an open session to discuss and take action on the subject matter discussed in closed session.
Motion by Alder Touche, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alder Kemp. And this is, of course, a roll call vote, if the vote could be the roll.
Alder Kemp?
Aye.
Alder Cole?
Aye.
Alder Posey?
Aye.
Alder Ricky?
Aye.
Alder Touche?
Aye.
Alder Cronin?
Aye.
Alder Journey?
Aye.
All right, and we are in closed session.
Aye.
In open session. All right, we are back in open session regarding discussion of possible action regarding the city administrator candidate. I'm just going to make a general statement on where we are at the process. The city council has decided to close the current process without selecting a candidate. The city did a thorough search, and while the candidate pool contained a variety of strong candidates, the city council ultimately decided that none of the finalists were a good fit with the city of Verona. I want to thank all the candidates for their interest in the position, their interest in the city of Verona, and for taking the time to participate in the application process. Where we are now is in the process is that we're going to consider some of our other potential options with the possibility of shedding some further light on the process or potentially coming to a decision at the next council meeting, which would be in two weeks. Anything further to add? With that, the last item is 13, which is adjournment. Motion by Alder Touche, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alder Kemp, I think. All those in favor of adjournment signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. And we adjourned at 9:13 PM. Thank you.